At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for April 6, 2023, beginning at 7:04. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we must insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Mays in leading us in the pledges.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a presentation and a program. Ms. Anita Foster?
Yes, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, all of you that are here in person, and everyone watching online tonight. We have a wonderful performance. We're going to have the Bowie Headliners Theater Department join us tonight. They have been one busy team already, all year long. All this fall, they were doing musical rehearsals, thespian competitions, and this semester, they've done one-act contests, community events, all kinds of rehearsals for their upcoming production of Pan, which is actually an original play written by... Where are you at? Are you behind the pole? Where are you? Oh, you are behind the pole! I was like, I just saw her in front of my face, Lindsay Hurdle. Please give us a wave. Lindsay is the original author of the show. They are here today, and they're going to perform a scene from their UIL one-act play, The Arabian Nights by Mary Zimmerman. The Arabian Nights is a boldly reimagined adaptation of one of the world's most enduring works of literature. When the heartbroken king encounters the clever maiden, she enthralls him with wondrous tales for a thousand and one knights, slowly healing his broken heart in the process. Directed by Lindsay Hurdle and Joy Trimble, theater students Jackson Swan, Maya Ramirez, Caleb Latimer, and Alexis Sanders will be performing the story of The Prince and the Tortoise. Take it away.
You know the hour is late, oh auspicious king, but I have one more story. Let it be one thousand knights and one knight before you grow weary of me.
And king decided it was time for his son to marry. My son, I wish you blindfolded yourself and shoot an arrow. You will marry the woman to whom that arrow falls the closest. An arrow fell upon the house, whom honor was not known. The prince set forth to visit the house and found a large and lonely tortoise. By Allah, she is written in my destiny. My son, you cannot possibly be married to a tortoise. This is the Wi-Fi warrant, but she has told me although she is a tortoise, she is an excellent cook.
Soon the king fell ill from chagrin that he had a tortoise for a daughter-in-law.
And the tortoise cooked a soup that cured the king.
While the other sister-in-law was helpless in that regard, there was a ceremony to celebrate the king's recovery. The sister-in-law decked herself out in finery and laughed out loud at the tortoise.
But then she stood up and poured soup over her head.
And when she did, the soup turned to emeralds, which clattered across the floor, and she turned herself into a beautiful princess.
The other wife poured soup over her head, but it stayed soup.
Not everything is as it seems.
Thank you so much, Bowie High School. Y'all were wonderful. Guess you're waiting?
They told me I could go.
Is he going to go from there?
I can't go from here. I'll stand to the side.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have our April 2023rd Student of the Month from Seguin High School, and Principal Billy Linson will now introduce the student.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Cavassos, President Fowler, and the board. I am privileged to recognize Sophia Lee as the Arlington ISD Student of the Month. Sophia has left her mark at Seguin by her involvement in activities across campus, as well as keeping a good academic standing since her freshman year to now. Her extensive list of campus involvement includes being a part of our orchestra, math National Honor Society, Vietnamese Student Association, Environmental Club, Student Council, Hostile President, and Key Club President. She is also a finalist for the prestigious Gates Award. Sophia is a well-rounded young lady, and she manages her academic and extracurricular activities extremely well. Her greatest strength, in her opinion, is trying to find solutions and working with whatever she has in any situation she is in. She's been a leader among her peers through her time at Seguin. Her ability to rally students to generate and boost student involvement and morale on campus is unmatched by any student I have come across in my administrative career. She consistently takes the lead on any student-led tasks that need to be completed on or off campus, and you can depend on her at all times. Sophia plans to continue her education in the state of California by attending the University of Southern California. Her plan is to research neurobiology and medicine for brain diseases while also spreading awareness on the mental health of immigrants. I am thrilled to have the opportunity to recognize Sophia Lee as the District Student of the Month.
Sophia, would you like to step forward and say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Linson and members of the board being here, especially Dr. Cavassos and my parents today. I would really like to thank Mr. Linson as being one of the greatest principals I've ever known. And I've been really honored to have my four years at high school at Seguin. The atmosphere is incredible, the teachers are incredible, and I've really grown as a person through those leadership positions. I used to be really quiet. I mean, and then now I'm able to lead a group of people, and that is something that I'm really proud of myself for growing today. And due to academic rigor and the support of the Arlington District, I've been able to grow my discipline, and that is a really important aspect of myself I'm going to take to college. So, thank you. Thank you so much for this honor.
Sophia, may Dr. Cavassos and I come down and present you with a little gift. Sophia, this is a pin that we all wear. It's a very special pin that represents Arlington ISD. Not everyone gets one of these. You can't go online and buy one. We want to present this to you because we are so proud. You're an exceptional student, and we know that you're going to continue to make Arlington proud.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, round of applause for that. So, Sophia, this is also for you to commemorate today as you represent Arlington ISD and our student population exceptionally well. I know your future is bright. Congratulations. Enjoy the rest of this school year, and congratulations.
Come, come, parents. Don't get close to her. There you go. Future is going to be very bright. I'm wondering if her parents have already bought a home in California. That's a long way, isn't it? We now come to our open forum for agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am. We have four registered for non-agenda later in the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and tonight I'd like to recommend the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for principal for Fitzgerald Elementary and principal for McNutt Elementary.
Madam President, I move that we accept the administrative ratification of appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McMura. So, we have a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Ms. McMura. Any discussion? All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and tonight we'll introduce the principal of Fitzgerald first, Taffeta Green. Taffeta obtained her Bachelor of Science for K-8 Elementary and a Master of Education for K-12 Reading from Winthrop University in Rock Hill. Most recently was our interim principal, you'll see her bio there, most recently our interim principal at Fitzgerald Elementary, has been an academic dean at Ausley, dean at Farrell, a dean at Wimbis, an instructional coach in two different districts, and has taught fourth and second grade and third grade. Next, the principal of McNutt Elementary, Chelsea Broughton. Chelsea attended University of Louisiana for Bachelor of Arts in Social Work, and then her Master of Education in Elementary Education. Most recently, Chelsea was our principal at Amos Elementary and has been an assistant principal at Blanton, has taught third and second grade and first grade as well in her career. So, congratulations, Chelsea.
Next on the agenda are our action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. Tonight, we propose for the board consideration the non-renewal of Niketra Hamilton.
John, it's not working.
Okay. Madam President, after considering her most recent evaluations, I move to non-renew the term contract to Niketra Hamilton, and I move that the record reflect the following. On February 16, 2023, the board proposed that term contract of Niketra Hamilton be non-removed or renewed, excuse me. Ms. Hamilton was timely provided with a notice of proposed non-renewal not later than the 10th day before the last day of instruction in the current school year. The written notice informed Ms. Hamilton of her right to request a hearing before the Board of Trustees within 15 days of receipt of notice, and Ms. Hamilton failed to timely request a hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a motion? Here was a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. We have a motion for Mr. Hibbs and a second for Mr. Wilbanks. Any discussion? The vote is in the affirmative. And we will not be bringing the consideration of the board handbook this evening. We will do that at another time. We now will address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Do I have any trustees that request items to be withdrawn? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda? We have a motion from Ms. McMura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Keisha Mays. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. We now move to discussion item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and tonight we bring for discussion, as we do in various board meetings depending on our calendar, House Bill 3 and District Improvement Plan progress monitoring. So, we have some assessment data to share and to discuss with the board as a discussion item, so I will turn it over to Dr. Lopez.
President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank y'all for your time this evening. I'm going to give you an update on the House Bill 3 and the District Improvement Plan goal progress. This is based on our most recent benchmark. I'm going to give you information on the assessment used for the benchmark this year and then the results. So, our benchmark was administered February 28 through March 9, and we use the STAR interim assessment for every single one of our subjects. The STAR interim assessments are the online computer adaptive assessment put out by TEA. They are designed to monitor student progress, but also to give a prediction regarding student performance, a kind of a projection for what they would most likely do on STAR. Again, they're developed and provided by TEA on TEA's platform through the Cambium system. They are aligned to TEACs that are appropriate for the grade level, and then they include the new technology-enhanced items. They provide district-level, campus-level, and then student-level reports. Districts and campuses are more just kind of aggregates of performance levels, whereas the student level, you get an item analysis and reporting category, so much more granular at the student level. Although we are using TEA's assessments, they did publish this kind of notice on their website. I'll read this aloud. During the school year 2223, STAR interim assessments will predict students' performance on STAR through an algorithm that has been calibrated using the existing STAR performance standards. Because new standards will be set after the spring 2023 STAR test administration, educators should exercise caution when interpreting these predictions. Predictions are one of multiple data points to consider when determining which students need additional support. So, I'll now move into the results on the assessment, and these results are through our internal research and accountability equating process, which I would also exercise caution with interpreting results because we have the same issue that TEA is currently having. So, all right, I'm going to start off with reading. Y'all are familiar with this template. This is what we've come to with after each one of our district administration of assessments. So, for third-grade reading, our goal was to increase from 69% to 71%, and the third-grade reading scores are currently at the 71% mark. They've been on an upward trend all school year, and hopefully that persists, and that's how they will do that if we're not better on the actual STAR test just next month. So, what we have added to this slide, this shows you performance broken down by subgroup for each curriculum assessment throughout the school year. And what you can see there is we have added a color scheme to the goal column that shows you, the green indicates that the goal is achieved. For the benchmark assessment, it's already achieving the goal that we want by the end of the year. The yellow is that we're within 5%, and then the pink color is that we're more than 5% from the goal that we would like to be at for the end of the year. So, you can see there's a lot of green for our third-grade reading, and that's great. Eighth-grade reading, the goal is to increase from 78 to 81%. And for eighth-grade reading, it's been pretty consistent throughout the year, just kind of fumbling along at that 80%, regardless of the window of time. And so, it would be fantastic. I feel like they can get 1% gain and typically do better on benchmark, excuse me, on the STAR than they do on the benchmark. Now, that's the historical trend, so with the STAR redesign and the setting of the new performance standards, that's not a certainty. But broken down by subgroup, this shows the different student groups. It shows their performance, and again, a lot of green on this slide, some yellow. So, on our way there for our eighth-grade reading. For high school English 1, the goal is to go from 64 to 68%. And from the beginning of the year, this has been on a downward trend and has took an uptick for the benchmark. And so, need to make more progress there. So, you know, we have a good six weeks of instruction, and so we'd like to see that happen by the end of the year, but for the STAR EOC. And this is broken out by student group, and as you'll see, they were 7% below for the overall, and so you will see slightly more of pink in our student groups. For English 2, the goal is to go from 70 to 72%, and this has kind of been, you know, hovering around that 70% along the school year and still right at that 70% for benchmark. So, needing to get a 2% gain. And then broken out by student group, less pink on this, more of the green and the yellow. That's a good indicator, and hopefully they'll, with the interventions that are putting in place in the classrooms and the STAR and EOC bootcamps and all of the other strategies that are being employed at this time of year, that they will get to their goal attainment. And then so overall for the district, our goal is to go from 71% to 74% for all of the grades for reading. It's, that's quite a bit of students, and so you wouldn't expect to see large movement in these percentages, which we don't. And we're actually sitting right now at 71% on the benchmark, which is, was our performance on last year's STAR. Need to increase by 3%. And again, you know, historically, we would see that increase, but, you know, no promises. So, moving into, oh, I'm sorry, and this is also broken down by our subgroups there. So, I'm now moving to math. Still a little bit of, you know, still a little bit of concerns with math, not seeing kind of the consistency or the upward trends that we see with reading. So, for third-grade math, the goal was to go from 62 to 67%, and we came in at 64%. We have been making progress with each administration, 60 to 63 to 64, but still need 3%. And we'll hopefully see that on the actual STAR administration this year. And this is the third-grade math broken out by the subgroups. And then for our eighth-grade math, this goal is to go from 64 to 72%. We came in at 63. And our eighth-grade math scores are, with each administration, they've just, they've kind of been up and down. So, this eighth-grade math was one of our biggest areas of struggle when we came back from COVID. And so, I think that we're just kind of still seeing that in some of our students. They missed out on the end of their fifth-grade year, kind of came back in their sixth-grade year, but we still were having COVID interruptions at that time. And so, yeah, so just seeing a little bit more, I don't want to call it disruption, but just kind of not as many patterns with our eighth-grade math students. And then here they are, broken out by their subgroup. For high school Algebra 1, the goal is to increase from 72 to 75%, and our Algebra 1 came in at 71% for the benchmark, kind of on a downward trend, and then took a slight uptick, and so hopefully that will come back up and hit the 75% on game day. And then this is Algebra 1 broken out by subgroup. And then for overall math for the district, the goal is to go from 64 to 70%. We're actually sitting, just like we are with reading, we're sitting right where we were on STAR at the end of the year with our current benchmark results. And so, would be nice with a big push for our individual grade levels to get to that And this is the overall math broken down by subgroup. Moving into the District Improvement Plan Goal 2, which is college, career, and military readiness, our goal was to go from 63 to 67% of our seniors receiving their CCMR point. We know that this is on an upward trend all year with the different ACT, SAT administrations, TSI, all the various opportunities. We have AP and IB testing that takes place in May. Texas College Bridge starts to finish up here in April and May. And so, we've seen an increase there. So, we're at 56% now, but we'll continue to see growth in that. Students have, our seniors actually have up until October to take their TSI. Now, we like to get the CCMR accomplished before students leave our buildings, before they graduate. So, anyhow, that will increase. And then attendance, our goal is to go from 90.9 to 93% for the school year. We started off really strong with first six weeks attendance, and we've just kind of been slowly declining, but that's, I'd rather a slow decline, and we know that that kind of starts to happen. That's a trend that we see when we look back historically. So, we're sitting at 92.8% currently, and we have, the end of our fifth, six weeks is actually tomorrow. So, we don't report that data out until a week after that, any cleanup or attendance issues in the system can be updated. So, we are at 92.8, so right, kind of hovering right underneath our goal for attendance. And that is all I have as far as results, so I will take questions. So I will take questions.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Dr. Lopez. Especially thank you for, I really liked the addition of the color code.
Thought you might like that.
That probably makes it a lot easier to go through this when you send it out. So it was very helpful. Thank you for that. Now, just for clarification, so this was a this was a STAR interim assessment developed by TEA?
Yes.
And the prior one was CA two?
CA three was internally, and those were internally developed assessments by our curriculum and instruction team.
Wait, CA three was?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking. The the other STAR interim assessment that was developed by TEA was CA two, correct?
Yes, I apologize. Yeah.
Okay. So and that's probably why you see a lot of correlation between the CA two and CA in this benchmark. So.
Now, that's for reading and just to clarify, that is for reading and math, that the SIA was used on CA two, not Science and Social Studies.
Right.
We didn't we didn't give you any Science and Social Studies results. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you for that clarification. So there's a lot of green and some yellow, so it looks like it's attainable. But I don't want to, I just want to reiterate what you pointed out, that there in the initial statement you wrote from TEA, that there could be some variability, because this is all correlated to the previous STAR, not any of the new changes that's coming. The only thing that's optimistic is this benchmark is designed. Did it have similar type of questions with the new question types?
Yes.
As the STAR, they'll be taking in a couple of weeks, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So this is probably pretty predictive, although with some good wiggle room because of what you stated at the beginning of your presentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So again, good that there's a lot of green and yellow when it comes to reading, with the exception of high school English. So it looks like we've got some work to do there. Math is a different story, especially eighth grade math, which has been troubling. It seems like we still struggle. That was where we were hurt the hardest with COVID.
Yep.
And it looks like we're still struggling at getting those kids back online. So no questions for you on that, but I think that's something that we as a board probably should focus on going into next year and over the summer is really examining and getting feedback on what those root causes of why it's so intractable and what we can possibly do to have a different story next year. We still have the STAR to go, and we've been surprised before. So I'm going to be pretty sanguine here and hope that despite what, you know, the consistency of the, all of our benchmarks and CAs, that those kids will come through at the end and knock it out of the park. But it still seems like that's an area of concern for us as a board. And CCMR, the 56 is again because a lot of those SAT scores aren't in, the TSI, a lot of things are yet to come. So there's still hope that in in your mind that we'll be able to reach that 67%.
Yeah, I don't even know if I don't even know if I would call it even hope. I mean, it's it's pretty much that that's the trend, those other opportunities, other opportunities. So it's not that we are waiting on an SAT file. There's multiple SAT administrations, ACT as well. And then our Texas College Bridge effort, the the CCMR team, Dr. McDonald and and Dr. Jarkow have kind of made sure to implement, as well as Dr. Horton, on the campuses to give students the opportunity for that college preparation, the class in their math and their language arts classes, that the completion of that course will earn students a CCMR point, in addition to preparing them for the classes that they would be exposed to.
I guess my question for you was that it seems like, having someone that's just recently graduated, that the majority of opportunities for us to earn earn points, our students to earn points, comes in this timeframe between April
Yes.
And as you said, even October of next year. So we've got a lot more opportunity ahead of us than what we've had behind us. Is that a true statement?
Yes. And I think more so by your senior year, you're you've taken, if you're going to take SETA, ACT, you haven't quite finished your AP or IP classes. You haven't even taken your tests until May. We don't get those results until June.
In some cases, not until after the kids graduate do they get to take their AP test?
Yes, that was very, that was interesting time. But so there's just things that will finalize in these last two months that will earn students' points.
Yeah, all right. No, thank you. Fingers crossed.
Yes, and I know this is repeating some of the the obvious here, but obviously how CCMR will be applied is still unknown. How these scores will be applied in terms of A through F next year, because that system is being transformed, not being tweaked, but being transformed. And so all the all those things are important to keep in mind as we report this, that then you apply them to a new system that TEA is is building. And and that becomes a whole different ballgame that we'll be talking about once those rules are finalized.
I didn't even want to get into that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Are we going to meet our goal or not?
That's right.
Ms. McMorro?
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. I was I was also looking at high school English one, and I did notice, looking at CA two to the benchmark, this was, it looks like to be the only area that didn't show growth from state assessment to state assessment. And so did high school English one have two state interims?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure I'm looking at that correctly. And I don't know if this would be a question for Dr. Lopez or Dr. Wirth, Dr. C, but has a decision been made whether or not we will administer the state interim assessments next year?
It's a great question. So I'll try to keep it brief because it's still in in discussion. But what we're finding is that the value of the first one is not very strong. And what we're finding, and again, this is probably more than we want to talk about, but because it's still under discussion, we haven't really discussed it too far. But we would also find is that the item types that we talked about earlier in the year doesn't seem to be an issue with performance. And so those two things are leaning towards, hey, that first one, it's it's like you're doing a benchmark at the middle of, at the beginning of a year, and you're testing a lot of stuff that has not been taught yet. And and it's it's not really helping inform. What does help inform are CAs and screeners. And so we want to see if maybe that should be an emphasis there. The second one, though, this one, but for next year, is certainly one that that is on the table, because it does help at the end cumulative, I mean assumative and things like that.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was your question, Ms. McMorro?
Well, and you make a good point, because the November, I believe it was November, the first interim assessment, it it can't capture, you you can give a cumulative assessment, but the teacher only had less than a third of an academic year to get through their content. So I could see that.
But we were, to your point, Ms. McMorro, early in the year, we were concerned that, yeah, but you have exposure to item types, right?
And the platform.
And the platform. And Dr. Lopez has done a lot of work, because she's got a great team and herself.
Yes.
And because that's an important question, this decision too. Is it worth the exposure of items and platform and all that? And we're finding, and you may want to weigh in on some of this, but we're finding that that those are not the issues, right? And so if those are not the issues, then what's the value of that first cumulative early in the year? And how helpful is it to a classroom teacher and to the system?
Yeah. Well, and the the main reason why I ask is because, and this this really is turning into a consideration for staff as you make that decision. I did appreciate that staff chose to forego the district created CA and replace it with the interim. No matter what decision is made, I I would hope that we're not going to increase the number of assessments that we are giving, because we all know that more instructional days leads to more instructional time for teachers to do their thing. And that does have a positive effect on the state assessment. So that was my only question.
No, it's a it's a great question. That first one does take, consume time, because it's cumulative and it's not yielding, at least, and this is early, but it's not yielding the value, you know, that 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 we knew it probably couldn't, but item type was really important and platform was really important. And it seems like that's that's already well in its way.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorro. Ms. Mays?
Okay, can you hear me? Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Just a very quick question on our attendance. For the district, do we look to see where the attendance is dropping, for instance, high school, junior high, elementary? And if we are for high school, particularly seniors? Just wanting to know if by this time in the year, if seniors feel like they're not going to have enough credits to graduate, do they maybe just discontinue showing up on a regular basis?
So, oh, okay, I did want to say, though, we do have a report that the principals have access, principals, APs, deans have access to. And it gives the rate by campus, by grade level, and then drills all the way down to the student level. So you can see the number of days over absent or the number of days that they have been enrolled. So you have a percentage. And I believe that tool is being used and that any strategies Dr. Hill can can answer.
Thank you.
So thank you, President Fowler, board members. Ms. Mays, to your question, it's ironic you asked it. I actually looked at that this morning in much detail. And specifically, I looked at all the secondary schools and high schools with focus. The juniors and seniors are meeting the mark. The concern, if you will, is at our lower grades at the high schools, where we have the attendance issues. And so I actually had a conversation with the principal today about that campus meeting their goal at every six weeks. We talked about that just today. But it's a focus at the high school now, not a focus, but the juniors and seniors are meeting the marks the other lower grades are.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question. Thank you, Dr. Hill.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Lopez, for the information. I appreciate it all. My question specifically with the the new new standards, the new measurements, what what's the dates that we're looking at? Have they moved from previous years as far as getting the preliminary scores, the final scores? How 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 far down the road are we versus earlier years? I think it's later, probably.
It is much later. We used to receive data files in early June, and we are not going to receive those until August.
The preliminaries?
The the performance level. So we we will get a preliminary file. The performance levels that are going to be used in the new system are not in there. There is three performance levels in the file that we'll get in June, excuse me, end of May. And it is, the categories are likely passing, zone of uncertainty, and then likely not passing.
Dr. Lopez, real quick?
Yes, sir.
Because I want to make sure that we're answering the question. That's that's for student, summer school, intervention, 4545. That's not necessarily to build a package that says predicting your scores, right? I mean, there's because those are not delineated that way. So let's just go back and please repeat those three.
It is different than previous years, because we could, you would get this preliminary packet and kind of sort of go, I think this is where we're going to hit.
Not kind of, Natalie Lopez was.
The team.
But anyway.
But so that is very different than what we have received in years past. Now, for EOCs, because graduation is dependent on EOCs, we will have the performance levels for the EOCs by May 31, I believe. And I can, I will get Dr. Porterfield to confirm that date, and then she can, we can send that to Dr. C to send to y'all, so that confirming, but I believe it's May 31.
But Dr. Lopez, one more time, those three levels, because that is that is new. This is why, again, not to harp on this too much, but this is why, in a new system and a new test, the best practice is to delay your use of that data. But that's not what's happening. So those three are, repeat those three. I think it's important, that's what that's what we're going to have, that's all we're going to have.
Yes, sir. So it the example that we were given by TEA was for about questions zero through 10, that would be likely not passing. For 10 through anywhere from 20 to 30, that's called the zone of uncertainty, because they don't know if that's going to be, low did not meet, high did not meet, low approaches, high approaches, and and then beyond that 20 or 30, depending on the test, but depending on the number of items, that area at the, from 20 to the highest or 30 to the highest number of items, that's likely passing. That's going to be, we think, those meets and masters performance levels. But we don't know that either. That's just kind of what what my team is thinking. Well, we would think that that's kind of how the mapping would go, but that zone of uncertainty would map to possibly three different performance levels.
And so just to put in context, the the planning that happens, back to Mr. Will Banks' question earlier, the planning that happens for the following year that's done in the summer, actually, by staff and by campuses, is really delayed.
Yes.
Right, that's one. The actual scores obviously are delayed. But the interventions, so let's go down to the student level, the 4545 and the things that are required, also have us, all of us in the state, pretty backed up, because you you don't know the certainty of the score. You can start interventions, but you may be shooting at a different target and all that, right? But when you do start in the fall, I guess what I'm saying is, in the fall, when improvement plans and campus plans and sanctions from the state and all that is way into the fall.
Yeah.
And then the test is a few months after that, right? So I know you know this, just as a context, this is what we're getting, which is why it should be delayed.
It's the zone of uncertainty.
It is, that's, yeah, it's so appropriate, the term, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I'm strategically looking at down the road and what our typical course is, and for you, on trying to do things to boost achievement.
That's correct.
You have a game plan ready, school's starting, we've got this game plan, here's what we're going to do, campus administrators, teachers, everybody's on board, you've had PD related to it, et cetera. And we're going to have, we're going to have a great start of year, but we're not going to know any of those action plans almost into the holidays.
And then you're rushing to do interventions, because you're, now you've settled and rushing to do interventions that are required by the state and and all that. And to your point, Ms. McMorro, the same thing about, well, then what CA should be given and all that? How many of them? How useful are they if you're starting that, you know? And how much anxiety does that cause and things like that? Those are things we're considering as well when we talk about how many assessments and which ones, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's probably going to really alter what that plan looks like next year.
That's correct.
Maybe as a a gap year, if you will, until we figure out, assuming they don't change it again, what's going to happen. Thank you. I just wanted that clarification, and it's it's unsettling, but I appreciate the info.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. I don't understand why we can't have givens and and know what to expect. Our teachers and our students work so hard. And then to just go into this unknown test, it just seems so unfair, so unfair. Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez and your team. We appreciate all this information and your hard work presenting it and pulling it all together for us. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have four registered speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. When I call your name, if you'll please step forward to the podium. Let's have Ms. Alisa Worster, if I pronounced your name correctly?
Alissa.
Alissa.
It's my parents' fault. Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? Yes, Ms. Worster. Welcome. Thank you.
The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens an opportunity to address the trustee on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to this speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak.
You will have two minutes to speak. Ms. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. Please end your presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, Dr. Cavassos, President Fowler and board members. First off, I want to thank each of you for serving our district and our community. My name is Alyssa Worster and I'm a proud Arlington ISD teacher of ten years. I'm also a mom of three beautiful children, one of which is a kindergarten student in AISD. I am speaking to you today to encourage you to make changes in our policies requiring that a city of Arlington armed police officer be placed at every single AISD campus at morning drop-off and dismissal times each day. There have been eighteen school-related shootings in the U.S. since returning for the spring semester in 2023. Yes, eighteen shootings in just three short months. And it's incredibly disturbing that that has now reached AISD since the tragedy that took place at Lamar High School just two weeks ago. Unfortunately, this is our reality in the world we live in today. We have to do something to protect our students and our staff. As teachers, we are terrified of potential intruders and not being able to protect our students. In addition to preventing gun violence, having a police officer on our campus each day would help in other ways as well, especially reducing the amount of extreme behaviors that we see on campus and crime. While I know many of our secondary campuses have SROs to help with these efforts, why wait until they're older to begin the support when as educators, we know that early intervention is key? I'm asking for police support at drop-off and pickup because I feel that this is a realistic request that could be implemented immediately. Would we love to have law enforcement all day, every day at every campus? Yes. But I know between bodies and budgeting, that may not be feasible. In the meantime, what about empty and unused police cars? Just having these parked in front of our school could do so much to deter potential threats. We need a police presence now. I appreciate your time and support and I look forward to the changes we make with the help of the Arlington Police Department. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Worster. Kenneth Baker? Welcome, Mr. Baker. The second forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate and trustees will not apply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Ms. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up and then you will please end your presentation. Mr. Baker?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kenneth Baker and I'm a parent of a current student at Curtis and Mertice Larson Elementary School. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Cavassos and the Board of Trustees for your service to our students and to our community. My current student is my second child to attend Larson. My first child attended Larson Kindergarten through sixth grade and is currently at Nichols Junior High. She wore uniforms her entire time at Larson. Uniforms in public schools began in the nineteen nineties and became commonplace, especially in AISD. They serve their purpose as a calming and equalizing presence in the public schools. However, in recent years, especially after the COVID situation, uniform requirements have become burdensome to some students and their families. Thirty-five percent of Larson students are considered transient. Currently, twenty-eight percent of Larson students are considered homeless, including one hundred two students staying in area hotels and eight percent staying with family and friends. There is a rush to purchase uniforms at the beginning of the year. Lower-income students often have problems finding the correct uniforms. Transient students must buy uniforms only to attend Larson for a short time, after which time their uniforms are not needed at their subsequent school. Currently, only fourteen AISD elementary schools have uniform policies and are currently enforcing the direct, the district dress code policy. We respectfully ask that the Board of Trustees allow Larson Elementary to end their formal uniform policy and allow the school to adopt and enforce the standard AISD dress code policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mohammed Abdal Rahman?
Good morning.
Welcome.
Can y'all hear me? Okay. First, I'd like to thank y'all and for letting me have the opportunity to speak to y'all. At sixty-six-five, on March twentieth, Jashawn Poirier was shot and killed at Lamar High School. A place where Jashawn played football, just like I did. A place where thousands of students, just like Jashawn and me, go to learn and shape their futures. A place where we Vikings live in fear, fear of not if, but when. Good evening, respected board members, my fellow community members, and anyone else who wants to protect and keep our children healthy. I am a senior at Lamar and what happened there has been a constant reoccurrence across the nation for a decade. Just after our shooting, Dallas' Thomas Jefferson High had an incident as well. It's absurd to have even one shooting in a year, let alone eighteen. I'm sure I do not have to convince y'all on the issue, but I urge y'all to push for adding mental health resources and funding to our schools. Specifically, things like guidance counselors and therapy programs that these kids can have access to. I understand that it will not pop out of thin air, but adding these resources will not only identify and support those who are at risk to themselves and others, but give students a tool to deal with the daily stressors of life. Things such as stress, anxiety and anger, to name a few. School is meant to prepare you for life and give you education and for your job. These tools will lead to a healthier student body who performs better in school, but also gets them ready for their futures and for hardships in life. Only after such an incident did we get officers and counselors, but they're gone now after two weeks. We need this to, we need this for the whole school year. I think it would be realistic for AISD to have one guidance counselor at each high school year round, dedicated to, to helping our students. Thank you for your time.
Katie, Katie Duzen? Welcome, Ms. Duzen.
Thank you. I'm nervous. Thank you, board, for all that you do. So I also am an AISD parent. I have two young kiddos and I'm a former student. I went to, to AISD schools K through eighteen. So I watched the video that you put out after the Lamar tragedy. And thank you for doing that. But there was no mention of preventative action that the school is looking at then or since then. So I'm asking you for preventative school safety tactics. Tactics, some of them that the district can start right now for free. For example, starting with secure storage education and modeling, gun locks, partnership with APD. And just the fact that you're communicating, exploring proven tactics. So other districts are already employing things and have been employing things like secure storage, education and training for parents. And to be clear, I'm not talking about adding more guns in schools from anyone besides APD. And just, just to close, my daughter is in pre-K. I have a pre-K and a first grader. And we did an active shooter drill the other day. After that, she didn't want to go back to school and I had to like bribe her in the morning to get, to get out of bed and get dressed. And it's, it's heartbreaking to hear from students. It's heartbreaking that I never had to deal with that growing up in AISD. And I thank you for all that you do, but I ask that we start talking about preventative action for school safety. And again, deeply considering what we can do right now for free. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duzen. It's now time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to share some news that's going on across our district. You'll see it pop up there on the video screen. Congratulations to more than eighty student athletes from our district who were honored at National Signing Day Celebration on Tuesday at the Athletic Center. The event was originally scheduled for February, but we had to postpone it because of, oh, you know, that winter weather that hit us. All the delay did, did was allow for more time for athletes to actually get more scholarships. So our students are playing nine different sports in college and earned a total of six million dollars in scholarship money. Congratulations to them, their families, their coaches, their teachers, their principals, and everyone who helped these young people become terrific athletes. So congratulations to them. While we're talking about signing day, we had another signing day ceremony on Tuesday night throughout the district. All our elementary schools participated in a signing day event for students entering pre-K. Look at that picture, right? Entering pre-K and kinder. This was the first time we'd done this and it allowed parents to register their kids for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, visit the school and meet the teachers. It also gave students a chance to do the same and use that big pencil, which was a big hit. I want to thank Dr. Orsini and her early childhood team for organizing the event and our principals and all our teachers for staying late and making this a great success. So congratulations to them. Another huge success that you're familiar with is Junior League's Arlington's Glass Slipper Boutique. The JLA event supplies prom dresses for students throughout the district, thanks to contributions from outstanding community partners. This year was a record-setting two-day event. The previous mark for dresses given out was, was out in, in a year was sixty. And this year, JLA had already fitted three hundred young ladies for prom and are working to set up additional windows as well. I want to thank JLA and our community partners and all our volunteers, including Ms. Fowler and others, who worked to make this event such a great success. Speaking of successful events, we'll look at our annual college and career expo at the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center. That one was a big one, too. We had more than seven hundred students and parents show up to talk about colleges and talk with businesses about opportunities that await outside our school district when our students are exploring those. It was a great event, great to be ready for summer as well. We saw a lot of students and some of you saw former students that are now seniors, but we won't go into that, Ms. McMorris. Former elementary students. All right, I want to thank our Arlington, she missed that, Arlington Council of PTA for all the work they do for us.
Oh, I get it.
Yes, yeah, that was for you.
Thank you. Big shout out.
Yeah, they've grown, haven't they, Ms. McMorris?
Yes, they have. They're so hot.
So whether it's, whether it's a PTA rally day on Austin or testifying before the state senate or taking charge in our community, our PTA is outstanding and we're blessed to have great PTA around our district. They're a huge key to our district's success. This is just a small sample of our council of PTA, but they're all across our district. We have more than five thousand PTA members in our district and I want to thank them for their support. Wednesday was one of my favorite days, not only because we have barbecue, but because it, we get to take part in the Kiwanis Woodrow Count Teacher of the Year Celebration. It was the sixty-second year that the Kiwanis have honored our teachers for outstanding work. We had more than seventy teachers and principals on hand for the lunch as they honored our high school, junior high and elementary teachers of the year. You see a great picture there. Congratulations to Arlington High's Alan Austin, Nichols Junior High, Sharnay Jordan and Little Elementary's Corinne Brookshire for being selected as the recipients of the Kiwanis Awards for the entire district. And that's Ms. Workman, if you don't know, Janet Workman. She has been part of this celebration for many, many years. And so congratulations to all of them. Finally, I want to thank Ms. Adams and her team at Morton Elementary for inviting me to speak to their, in their career day, for an opportunity to speak to pre-kinder, kinder and first and second graders all at the same time in the spring, in the cafeteria. Yeah, they are sitting very nicely. This was the beginning of the ceremony. And they wanted to know what I did and it was very hard to explain, but I tried my best. Then I told them about Okra and they understood. And so they found out a little bit about me and their future and persistence and all that. But I want to thank those teachers and the staff at, at Morton and everywhere in our district, but particularly there, for their, the way they honor the students and treat them and make sure that they are exposed to many different opportunities. So thank you for that invitation, Ms. Adams, and I'll close with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President and Madam President. Our speakers tonight were very profound. They were very, they talked about very difficult subjects. And I appreciate each one of our speakers tonight. I really do. Every trustee carries a burden about the safety of our children every given day. And we always try to improve, but we always need to continue to hear from our teachers, our community. So I thank you for that. And going directly into the superintendent's report just happens because it's the last thing generally happens. It seems to be where there's a little bit more levity on, on top of a serious subject that was discussed tonight. Please don't take that by any way of thinking what you have just said to us all of a sudden was being brushed off because we were going into the exciting things that we all want to celebrate within our district. So once again, I want to thank our speakers tonight. And I do want to celebrate the great things and that's what our district should be about is talking about celebrations rather than the difficulties at times, but we have to face those. So they're real. We, we as a board, I can tell you that we all appreciate what you have brought forward to us tonight. And this board, to each one of you, to the superintendent, I thank you for what you do to serve this community too. And I'm better because of it, because of your service and the service of our teachers and the protection that we try to give. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that I could share that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Ms. McMorris?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'll be really brief. I, I had the opportunity to take a little bit of ti, a little bit of time off of work and I just wanted to acknowledge and sincerely thank the administrators and staff of the campuses that I've recently had the opportunity to visit. Martin High School, Key Elementary, Arlington College and Career High School, Sam Houston High School and Little Elementary. And on the note of student safety, I was able to meet with two of my SLAB students. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with SLAB, that stands for, look, now I can't remember the acronym. Student Leadership Advisory Board. I was second guessing myself. Each trustee is paired up with students from all of our high schools. And I met with my SLAB students on the topic of student safety and they brought some really good insight as well. So I'm looking forward to sharing what they had to say with the board. And I just appreciate the students and the staff and the administrators for taking time to meet with me. And there are so many great spring events going on at our campuses. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorris. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I would like to thank Mr. Hibbs for his comments. And as a former Lamar dad, I want to appreciate, I really appreciate you guys coming forward and letting us know and speaking to us tonight about a very serious subject. And I want to thank these two ladies for remembering Lamar and providing these ribbons that you see all of us wearing here tonight. I take solace in two things after those tragic events. I went through a tragedy, my family did. I'm going to be careful and not upset my wife by divulging it, but we ended up having to move back here and we moved back here during that tragedy because of what a great community in North Arlington we had and that rallied around us. And that spirit of North Arlington was in full display during this tragedy. And that community really rallied around, the whole Lamar community rallied around and, and really the whole city did. But it was just a stark reminder of the kind of community that we are blessed here in Arlington and especially that community. I want to shout out to them for, you know, making Arlington a great place. And it takes people like that to help us get through difficult times. They helped my family and they've now. that to help us get through difficult times. They helped my family, and they've now come and rallied around the whole Lamar community and helped them, and just tremendously gone out of their way to support that community after that tragedy. And then I want to thank Dr. C. and his staff, because as difficult as that day was, I kept hearing report after report about how well-trained, how well-prepared we were, and how evident the layers of security that we've built in over the years, and the level of professionalism of our security staff, and our partnership in cooper, cooperation with APD has been, and I think contributed to a quick resolution to a tragic event. So, I also want to thank the principal, Andy Hagman, who was just an amazing administrator, and that was on full display in the reunification site, as he was going up to each and every student, making sure they were okay, giving out his cell phone number, and truly, you could tell just how much he loved and cared for each one of his students. So, in a lot of ways, we were very blessed, and it was as tragic as that event was, I'm so glad that we live in this community with the type of people that rally around and help us in tough times. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. And there are truly no words that can make up for that tragedy, but we want the, the community to know. We want the people at Lamar to know that they're in our thoughts and prayers, and we're, we're working to see, you know, what other measures maybe we can put in place. And of course, there's always lots of things going on in, in the background that we're not allowed to really talk about. But we want the citizens to know. We want the community to know. We want the family at Lamar to know that we are, we are working. We are looking for ways that we can improve our safety and security for our kids so that they're not afraid to go to school. And we're working on that, and we hope to maybe be able to roll out some things and talk about some things very soon. But we want Lamar to know that, that we love them, we care about them, and it's been two weeks, and we haven't forgotten. We will not forget, and we'll continue to think about them and, and think about all of our students in AISD, as well as our faculty. And they're in our prayers. One more note. I just want to do a shout out to a Martin teacher, Molly Haney. I got an email from the Red Cross, and they said they just wanted me to know what a phenomenal teacher she is. She does a blood drive for the last couple of years. Last year, she brought in forty-five units of blood. She's on course right now for her spring blood drive to double that amount. And the lady at the Red Clock, Red Cross said that she is just such a phenomenal lady, and they haven't really experienced this in a lot of school districts, and she just wanted all of us to know what a driving force this teacher is. And I'm just so appreciative of Molly Haney, not only for providing this blood for our much-needed community, but for teaching her students and teaching the students at Martin to give back and to donate and do what they can to help other people. And I, I, I think that's really the takeaway, that what she's instilling in the students there. But I just wanted to give her a shout out because I, I was very impressed with what she's doing, and obviously, the Red Cross is also, because one of their reps took the time to, to send me an email just so she wanted me to know. Thank you very much. Ms. Secret, oh, Ms. Secretary?
At this time, I don't have anything to report. Thank you, President Fowler.
Thank you, Ms. McMorro. At this time, we're going to adjourn, but we're going back into closed, so I will adjourn at eight eighteen into closed. And we're not returning.